All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to a special council meeting, City Council meeting in Cleveland Heights. It is September 9th, 2024. It is 5:00 PM. Addie, would you call the roll?
Posh.
Here.
Petras.
Aye.
Maddox.
Here.
Russell. Larson.
Here.
Kuta.
Here.
Cobb.
Here.
Davida Russell is excused. She's actually still at work and may join us via Zoom. The next order of business is first readings for consideration of adoption requested.
I have resolution number 173-2024 on first reading. A resolution approving the report of the Assessment Equalization Board appointed to hear objections to the estimated assessments for the Public Services Plan for the Cedarly Special Improvement District, Inc., and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Go ahead. Counselor Larson.
I don't know who would answer this, but I'm curious to know if the one objecting property owner appeared at this meeting.
He did not. Yeah, he did not come to the Assessment Equalization Board hearing.
Thank you.
And Mr. Law Director, that's an automatic forfeit for the complaint?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have ordinance number 174-2024 on first reading and ordinance determining to proceed with the implementation through assessment of the cost of a public services plan for the Cedarly Special Improvement District, Inc., levying assessments for said purpose and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All right. Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have resolution number 175-2024 on first reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor to apply for grant funding under the Cuyahoga County Department of Development's Community Development Supplemental Grant Program to install benches in public parks, streetscapes, and spaces throughout Cleveland Heights, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Yes.
I just have a question.
Yes.
There's no doubt that we need to replace the benches throughout the city and picnic tables as well, but I'm kind of curious with the language that was used, Director Hannah. When they talk about beautification of the city, then they mention in section one on the legislation that these are accessible improvements to public parks. Can you clarify why the word accessible is used?
I think that in large part, first of all, you've got Assistant Planning Director Karen Knittle here who can probably weigh in on, sorry about that, on some of the specifics. But any new park improvements are going to be accessible, meaning ADA compliant and otherwise accessible as sort of the new standard for the city's parks.
Okay. Thank you.
And there is an amended piece of legislation on this that should be here any second, which changes this only insofar as it authorizes the acceptance as well as the matching and expenditure of the grant monies to make sure that everything is covered in one fell swoop. Right now, this authorizes the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary for acceptance of the grant. So it's broadened just that much.
Do we need a way to vote for that to be?
If you...
We have two other pieces of...
So if you adopt the piece that is marked revised 9924, that will incorporate that language providing for the authorization of the matching, because there's a matching component required of the city, and expenditure of the grant funds.
So have a look for a motion to do that?
Yes.
Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion to revise this legislation to the revised version 9924?
I'd make a motion to amend the resolution 175-2024 with the updated version. Is there any other language we should be adding to this motion?
No, it's just marked revised 9924.
Okay, 9924.
Section one is revised for the purposes that I mentioned.
Okay, very good.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And now we need to vote on the legislation.
As amended.
As amended. Thank you. So do we have a motion to do that?
Actually, we already had a motion and a second, and then you did the amended. So you just vote. You just need to vote.
Oh, okay. Any discussion first? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The motion passes. Second readings.
I have ordinance number 167-2024 on second reading and ordinance amending section 111.23 publication of ordinances and resolutions of the codified ordinances of the City of Cleveland Heights, Ohio, introduced by Councilmember Cobb.
Moved.
Second.
All right. It's been motion and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
My apologies for the record. Who was that that seconded? I didn't catch that.
It was kind of a tie.
Thank you.
All right. All right. And the last order of business is discussion on council's expense budget. Does everybody have this?
Is it in part of our packet or is this just handed out?
The expense budget was emailed by Addie to us. It kind of looks like this. Red sheet. Could be.
Yeah, it could be.
Okay. There we go. All right. So the purpose of this discussion is we do need to get our budget to Interim Director Schuster today. And if you look at the 2024 bottom line for, we authorized $252,386. We spent $130,361.60. Mr. Hannah, I believe that balance would go back, we don't have Tara Schuster here, but I'm assuming the balance would go back to the general fund. Our budget this year, if you look through everything that's in yellow here in the right-hand column for 2025, and then go to the second sheet, it's very close to last year's budget. And you could kind of look at the kind of A, B, the 2024 and 2025 on the first page. So I guess part of our discussion would be, is there anything anybody wants to add? Or does anybody have any questions about what's on here as is? Yes, go ahead, Counselor.
I think we should add one thing that was actually brought up by several, I believe you. Counselor Maddox was one of the ones. I mentioned it. I think we had one or two other folks mention it. It seems like we're very frugal looking at the budget versus the actual spend. So even though we may be budgeting X amount of dollars, we tend to, you know, keep this money sort of like in a potter keg dry in case it's needed. But I would like to see some communications money budgeted for, you know, a very, very part-time resource.
Sarin, when you say some, do you have an amount in mind?
Off the top of my head, I don't.
Okay. And is this a part-time? I mean, what are you envisioning here?
I thought that'd be more of a conversation we should have as a council. I mean, it could be as high as a part-time resource working 10 to 20 hours a week. That sounds a little bit much.
All right, go ahead, Counselor.
I was just going to list there were three things that I had, and communications was actually on a list. And the reason I'm listing all three is because I'm not quite sure if maybe they should be combined, and here's why. I put part of that as a special events budget, is just making sure that some of those events that we host is actually a budget for, such as the women's event, in addition to a community engagement budget, which goes back to communications, I think. And I think there's a couple of ways that you could look at it. You could either talk about it from a standpoint of staffing or from supplies or printing and things like that, just making sure that there are extra things that we want to get out or mail. We could go that route as well. Something like that may not cost more than $5,000 or so for doing something maybe quarterly to send something out to residents to just kind of inform them on our own of what we're doing or something like that. But I'm not quite sure what the appetite is for that of the rest of council, but I think you could either go the staffing route or just kind of figure out how to utilize those funds if we're just strictly for communications to send things out or social media or a part of a broader community engagement budget.
So a couple of things. You see that last line contingency? Does everybody see this? It's 2716. That $3,000 that's budgeted does include the Women's Month, but that's not to say that has to be the only event expenditure we have in the year. So if somebody has, you know, another idea or you just want to have some money there for...
Just a quick question about that. Is that the only thing in that? Is it just that event?
I'd have to ask Addie if that's the only...
No, sometimes there's contingencies for things if we've got like name tags that need to be redone, pictures, that kind of stuff. That's typically in there.
But what would you say the budget for the Women's Month event would be about? We did what we were talking about doing last year that we didn't do.
Well, what we talked about if we were doing last year, I think it'd be probably around the three to four. That would include food, however, meals, which I included in the meals line as opposed to...
I see.
...the emergency line.
Three to $4,000?
Yeah.
Okay.
President Kuta?
Yes.
Because Addie and I and Counselor Russell at one time talked about doing a brunch or a luncheon or something different this coming year in 2025. That's why we're asking for a bit more.
And that would be the event as opposed to what we did?
I think so, right, Addie? Yes.
Yeah, that's, I think we've discussed it instead.
Okay. Yes, please.
Yeah, I'm sorry. He had to say that first.
Oh, I didn't.
No, I thought I saw a couple on that side first. But I saw your hand before mine. Okay, then I'm going to take it. If we have things like a hearing, like on the deer, which is something that our committee has, that the Health and Safety Committee has talked about doing, is there a cost associated with that? I mean, so when we talk about things like advertising, we want to get something out in social media or something along the lines. I mean, I'm under the impression we can't use the city's PR people for that.
Well, we can. We can submit anything we want to Mike Thomas, copy the mayor. I would just say there's been a pattern of that being approved. If you're talking about doing something more than that, which is, I believe, what we're kind of getting at with communications, with having a communications budget, you know, certainly we could talk about that. But we've done, that's what we've done in the past, just the kind of standard sending it over and having it go into the e-newsletter. And if we were like doing it ahead of time, maybe even the Focus magazine.
So, well, that's what I was going to say. And so what about the Focus magazine? Is there an option for us to utilize that and get information out?
There's an option for us to ask, to make a request.
How often does that happen?
I want to say the Focus magazine is three times a year.
Hmm.
Is it four? Yeah, I thought they cut it back to three. But so it's three or four times a year. So it would be, but to your point, it would have to be something that we knew we were going to do ahead of time if we were going to use the magazine. Any other, I mean, so communications, any other ideas?
Sure. Well, following up on what Councilmember Maddox talked about, special events. So, and I don't know where the appropriate places to budget this, whether it should come out of our budget or the city's budget, where we have been approached by organizations to sponsor things or offer up money. For example, the money we're giving for the music hop, should we be including that in our budget or should we be adding that to the city's budget for special events? And in that vein, I'm working on a resolution for support for the Happy Run that's coming up.
Happy 5K.
The 5K run that helps raise money for our scholarship fund for our recreational programs. So if anyone wants to sign on to that, I'll segue right into that. And if I could, this is slightly off topic. Talking about resolutions, I'm working with Councilmember Petras on a resolution for supporting the request by the Coventry Peace Campus Organization to transfer the building only to them from the library. So if there's anyone that would be interested in joining that resolution, please let Addie know on both of those. Hopefully we'll have drafts ready by the end of business tomorrow.
Okay, I'm going to call any second. But so I understand, so right now, the way we do it, and you make a good point, is we do a budget adjustment. I mean, that's how when council sponsors an event, we do a budget adjustment. It does not come out of the council budget. You're suggesting that we, either in this contingency or in a special events, you know, maybe we add a category special events where city council is going to be a cosponsor of an event, that we have a budget for that?
And I, yeah, we don't have the finance director here to ask her. I just don't know where the appropriate place, whether that should be a budget item for us or a budget item for the city, because it's, you know, we're authorizing the money, but it's not, I don't view it as council supporting it. I view it as the city supporting it, but...
Right. But it's just council-initiated legislation. Any thoughts on that before I go to Counselman Petras?
I was trying to remember where we took the $5,000 for the music hop last year, where that came from, if it came from council's budget or from the general fund.
Addie, I don't believe that came from council budget.
I think it just came from unencumbered funds.
No, that was my, so before we leave, let's decide if we want to have a budget for events. Go ahead.
I guess it sort of makes sense to me that unless we are a cosponsor of it, that it would be in the general fund, that it would be included in this fall's budget because it's, you know, something that the City of Cleveland Heights is sponsoring and not necessarily our council. So I think that that would be my preference there. But back to the topic of communications in principle, I support the idea of allocating some money for that. Just one consideration that I wanted to throw out there is there are a lot of advertising and communications agencies out there, and that it might make sense for us to consider approaching one of them. They might be able to, you know, do some work for us on an ongoing basis rather than having to hire someone. But that's just an idea that I'm throwing out.
Yeah, I mean, my, we just need to figure out what we want to budget for it. And then I think the, whether we hire somebody or we actually just have a place to go for as-needed work. Yes, Counselor Posh.
So sort of in this, I mean, yeah, I think I heard earlier that you need some numbers tonight to give to...
Yes, we do.
So this is what I would suggest regarding the communications. I do think it makes most sense to outsource this initially to somebody that we all agree on and just put some kind of cap on it. And I'm going to say $20,000 to $30,000, just pulling a number out of thin air. Whether we spend it, we don't. I mean, it seems like we have a pretty good track record of only spending things that we need. I'm not sure that's going to be close to that. Also related to that are the legal expenses. There was some talk about hiring a lawyer, and, you know, thus far, none have happened. There is going to be a resolution regarding lawyers' fees to cover my legal expenses, which I worked with the law director on. That's capped at $10,000, but I think people think it's going to be much, 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 much smaller than that. Just throwing that out there. And if council does hire a lawyer, your number's going to be a lot more than the $20,000 that you budgeted.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at here. Yeah, because right now, it's an unknown as to how much and how far we'd have to go with that. So everybody looking at the $20,000, obviously, we spent zero of the $20,000 we budgeted for last year, but do we want to change that $20,000 number for 2025? Well, that's true. You know, we're looking, if we were to, if we were to have to hire lawyers this year, it would obviously have to be a budget adjustment if we exceeded $20,000. So far, we've spent nothing.
I'm going to suggest, excuse me, President Kuta.
Go ahead.
I'm going to suggest that if we don't need to use that $20,000 for legal contractual, that we, in essence, roll it over and leave that budget at $40,000 for next year for any contingency, anything that may come up that we're not anticipating.
So...
True.
I'm hearing, let's budget $40,000 for the legal contractual for 2025. Okay. Any comments about that? So do we, I mean, we can have agreement, right, Addie? You're the only person...
Yeah, remember, this isn't...
Not voting, but we are.
You're not voting on anything. This is just an initial budget anyways, so we're going to still have to present in the actual budget hearings as well. So this is just a start.
All right. So $40,000 for legal contractual and do we want to say $20,000 for communications?
Are we wanting to say communications or community engagement generally, or it's the...
I would probably slash it, you know. What do you think?
I'm just not comfortable with hiring an outside firm to do that until we talked about a scope. I think that there's some things we could do, but I'm not quite sure if that expense is necessary. I'd have to flesh that out some more to see exactly what we'd be having them do. But that just, it just seems like the beginning of that to really start out with someone outside. I just would like to see the details first. So I have no problems with communication and engagement, but the outside firm, I just have questions about.
And so do I. I would think everybody would. The problem is we got to, we have to submit something to, not Assistant Director, Interim Director Schuster.
So, I mean, just to keep all options open, I mean, we don't necessarily have to spend the money, and I think we're the ones that are very frugal on this. I mean, let's make sure that that number's large enough. So you're getting a part-time resource that would get benefits, for example. I mean, if it's going to be someone that's going to be an employee, you just put him, you just pay him through the payroll that we would have. But at that point, you're at an amount larger than $20,000. But I think it does come down to the scope. We haven't spoken about the scope, so that's a fine idea. But if we're budgeting something, we're going to need more than $20,000 if it's going to be an internal person. And I don't care either way.
But that's something we'll have to do. But based on the budget from this year and what we spent last year, I think I would feel comfortable knowing that we'd be able to move money from one category to another. It's certainly done all year long from the administrative side. Go ahead.
Am I understanding correctly that if we allocate some amount of money, let's just say for the sake of conversation, that it's $20,000 for communications, that we could decide later whether we want to hire someone to help us internally part-time or outsource it? We could make that decision at a later time. Right now, it's just a matter of settling in on an amount to be allocated. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I do have a question. Like, we keep talking about education, opportunities to make sure that people are aware of their rights as tenants. The projects that the Climate and Environmental Sustainability Committee is working on in coordination with the Climate and Resilience Plan that Director Coordinator Boatang is working on, so would, you know, like brochures and any information that we would have printed, would that be included in the communications or would it be in an advertising budget? How are we looking at that bucket?
Yeah, I have to look and see what else is on here.
The advertising and contractual, as it currently stands, has really been used for publication of legislation, which you guys just passed a resolution to not have to do on the paper anymore. So it'll be less expensive to do that. So you can kind of do some finagling there if you want in terms of what we spend it on. I did lower it because we're not going to be spending as much, but...
These will be one-time expenditures. Thank you.
President.
Yes, go ahead.
You know, when we're talking about communication, my question is, why aren't we partnering with the administration when the focus is going out? Why aren't we a part of that publication? It seems to me to make sense that there should be a council portion of that. And why isn't that happening? I mean, we're funding that publication. It seems to me to be a waste of money for us to have to be sending out a separate publication to the residents in this city.
Yeah, but I don't think, I don't, I mean, I know I don't want to do that. That's why we were talking about using the Focus magazine. I mean, we can always request it. I can't, I mean, I can't really tell you from the administrative side. I can tell you that I was asked to participate earlier in the year, and there was a decision made at some point to not have myself, and actually it was Council Vice President. We did a lot of essay writing for answering questions that were sent over by the Communications Department, but the larger question, so that didn't make it into the Focus magazine. But I think what we have to do is decide what it is we want to put in there, send it over to the administration and see what happens. I certainly wouldn't rule out that we'd have the role I think you're looking for, but we have to ask, and so far, I don't think we have.
Building off of what Councilman Cobb said, I think that it would be nice if we were able to partner with the administration. I think that financially, it would make sense. It would be a more prudent use of city resources. I do think that it would be worth that conversation, also including discussion about the city news newsletter, because if I'm being honest, just this last week, I sent two pieces that I saw in the media along, and they weren't included, and I got no reason for why they were not included. So I do think that it would probably be healthy if we had a broader conversation about collaboration and communications.
Well, I'll certainly raise that in the leadership meeting, but I think your broader point is, let's not, let's not do parallel communications that cost more money. And I think we're in agreement there. Counselor Posh?
Definitely agree. We should be using the resources, and there should be sharing of resources. The, I'm going to be sharing with council during our council meeting of a whole kind of like this expectation kind of framework on how we can work together on what our expectations are. And part of that would be a discussion of where do you think, you know, what's our expectations with the administration and what is their expectations for us, just so we're all on the same page. And one of those might be this communications issue. I mean, we do have the expectation that we're able to get stuff published. Now, granted, there's got to be guardrails on that, and it's got to be respectful, and we need to figure that out. But I think that would be certainly very much part of the topic, because it'll help, you know, I think, us figure out what we think is appropriate. It helps us then have a conversation with the administration on what they think is appropriate. And it helps us then have a conversation with the administration on what they think is appropriate.
Okay, before I kind of summarize what we've talked about, is there anything else that anybody wants to add to the budget?
Just for confirmation that the membership to the National League of Cities is included in that membership number?
It is.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
That's, let's see...
46, I think, is what it was quoted.
007.1 Professional Memberships.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's $6,000, includes OML, NOACA, and National League of Cities.
Thank you.
And my OMCA.
Thank you. I did not have that. Go ahead, Councilman.
Question for this budget item management consultant contract. Is this broad enough to cover if we needed to hire, for example, you know, someone to give us some policy advice on an issue?
I believe so, yes. This is typically what, in the past, we had used for paying for the retreat facilitators. But I think it would apply for that as well.
And it's the charter amendment that was passed in May of 2022, I believe, included this, is not the amount, obviously, but the fact that council had the authority. Yeah, yeah. So we got, we're changing the legal contractual from $20,000 to $40,000. We are adding, if, do we have agreement about adding the $20,000 for communications?
Yes.
And then, do we have agreement there? I'm looking to my right here. Pash?
Yes.
Addix? On the amount. What would you like to see the amount be? Okay. He's saying that we have to have this discussion later anyway, but he's fine with this for now. Go ahead.
I'm sort of with him. I, we need to have a dialogue with the administration about our ability to do a better job of being part of these city communications. And, you know, if we're not, then I don't have any problems if we need to spend the money. But let's make sure we have that conversation. So let's, you know, I guess put this in as a contingency item, subject to knowing that we can... Sorry, let me...
Sort of as a space holder, then?
Yes, thank you.
And when we actually vote on the budget in December, we could obviously make a change at that time, or before that. Yeah. Any other items that people would like to see in the budget? All right, Addie, you can make those adjustments and run them over. Is there any other business?
It was just those two, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, if there is no further business, this meeting is adjourned at 5:32.